Okay. We're reconvening our open session. Good evening, everybody. We're at item 2.0. Trustee Lang, do you want to report out any actions taken in closed session?
There were no actions taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. Now have the invocation led by trustee Witt, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Lang.
As we come to the end of this year, let us look at the joys that have been given to Saddleback and Irvine Valley College. Let us remember how fortunate we are to guide, to teach, to learn at such fine colleges. We thank you, Lord, for the strong leadership at the district and at each campus, and for the compassionate and stellar instruction from our faculty and the genuine support from our classified staff. As we look at the season ahead, help us rightly to remember the reason for this season. As we focus on finals, shopping malls, and tasty delights, let us remember to share in the song of the angels and the gladness of the shepherds and the worship of the wise men, or commemorating the rededication of the Holy Temple in Jerusalem. Close the doors of hate and open the doors of love all over the world. Let kindness come with every gift and good desires with every greeting. May this new year bring our district grateful and understanding thoughts and the decisions that are made for the good of our students, the students who are the oxygen of this institution. Amen.
Please join me as we salute the flag to this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now we're on to 2.4, administration of the oath of office for trustees reelected to be administered by our very own trustee Prendergast. I think we should stand up. Yeah. Where do you want us to stand? Here? There?
Podium.
Yeah, here?
Oh.
Okay.
You guys stand right here.
You guys stand there. I'll read it on the microphone and then it'll be recorded. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am trustee Jamal.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
meeting and Facilities Corporation meeting. And we will begin with the election of officers. That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California And we'll start off with Exhibit A, election of officers. So I think we start off with
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic the office of the president.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith
President of the board?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to Correct. Correct.
And allegiance to
Can I nominate?
Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
Oh, trustee Prendergast. Oh, you have to And the Constitution of the State of California
Constitution of the State of California.
Yes, I would like to nominate trustee Jamal as president of the board.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
I second it.
Without any mental reservation They have a nomination from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Witt.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge Any further discussion? And thank you for the nomination.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
You accept?
The duties upon which I am about to enter. I guess I, it depends how I vote.
Duties upon which I am about to enter.
No, you don't have to abstain. You can vote.
Congratulations. Okay. Any discussion? And thank you for the second. Seeing no further discussion, go ahead and vote on the nomination. It is a six, actually five yes votes, two abstentions, one trustee being absent, a student advisory yes vote. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. We'll now accept the nomination for the office of the vice president of the board.
I, go ahead.
Whoa.
Oh, it's okay.
Can you request? Trustee Lang.
Yes, I would like to make the motion
Pardon me.
I'd like to make the motion to nominate Jim Wright to serve as vice president of the board.
I second.
I have nomination from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Witt. Any further discussion? And thank you for the nomination.
You accept?
I guess I, it depends how I vote.
No, you don't have to abstain. You can vote.
Okay. Any discussion? And thank you for the second. Seeing no further discussion, go ahead and vote on the nomination. Oh, trustee Wright's not here. It is a six, actually five yes votes, two abstentions, one trustee being absent, a student advisory yes vote. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. We'll now accept the nomination for the office of the vice president of the board.
I, go ahead.
Whoa.
Oh, it's okay.
Can you request? Trustee Lang.
Yes, I would like to make the motion
Pardon me.
I'd like to make the motion to nominate Jim Wright to serve as vice president of the board.
I second.
I have nomination for trustee Wright by trustee Lang to serve as vice president. A second, I think trustee Witt had you by a little bit. Any further discussion on trustee Wright's nomination to be vice president? Seeing none?
He's not here to say no.
And he's not here. I assume he's going to accept. Go ahead and vote on the item. Nomination? Yeah, well, it's teaching not to show up. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Congratulations to trustee Wright. And now, well, accept nominations for the clerk of the board.
I'll, I'd
Trustee Milchuker.
I'd like to nominate trustee David Lang for clerk.
I have trustee Milchuker nomination for, from trustee Milchuker of trustee Lang to be clerk, second by trustee Prendergast. Any discussion on the nomination? Go ahead and vote. It is a five trustee yes votes, one trustee abstention, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Congratulations, trustee Lang.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the board.
Okay, so I'm going to do the next set as a group, a block of two. The appointment of the secretary and assistant secretary of the board, and we have proposed Deborah Fitzsimmons to be secretary of the board and CM Brombott to be assistant secretary of the board. Motion from trustee Lang.
Second.
Second from trustee Milchuker. No further discussion. Go ahead and vote on the nomination or appointment. Who are we missing? We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Congratulations. We now move on to Exhibit C, appointment of trustee representatives, first being representative to nominated committee to the Committee on School District Organization. A lot of committees. Current representative is trustee Wright. The alternate is trustee Prendergast.
Sure. Just real quick, we've been given a list in the past of the current, or do you only have that?
I have it.
Oh, okay. Maybe that's because when I was doing that.
So I will, I will
You'll just read them out each time? Okay.
So the current, we have a, current representative is trustee Wright and you're the alternate, trustee Prendergast.
Right there.
So we have a motion from trustee Lang, I believe. Trustee Prendergast, did you want to second it or change it?
No.
I second.
Okay, second from trustee Witt. Any further discussion? So let's go ahead and vote on the nomination. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. The next appointment is for the district's political action representatives to the OCSBA, Orange County School Board Association. And currently, our current rep is Terry Witt.
I second it.
Motion from trustee Lang to continue trustee Witt as our representative, and a second from trustee J. Any further discussion? Go ahead and vote on the appointment. Oh, we have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Now on to our representative to the Orange County Legislative Task Force. The current representative is trustee Milchuker. The alternate is trustee Lang.
I'd like to nominate Marsha Milchuker.
We have a nomination for trustee Milchuker to continue serving
Second.
Second from trustee Lang. Any further discussion? Nope. Go ahead and vote. We have a five trustee yes votes, one trustee abstention, and one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Now we move on to our representatives to the audit committee. This is the district's audit committee. Currently, the chair is trustee Lang. We actually have three members of the board who serve on the audit committee. The current chair is trustee Lang. The other representatives are trustee Wright and trustee Prendergast. I believe we can accept nominations in a block.
I move that the, that the three people that currently have it will do it for one reason.
Motion from trustee Milchuker to have trustee Lang serve as chair, and trustee Wright and trustee Prendergast also serve on the audit committee.
I second it.
Second from trustee J. Any further discussion? Trustee Prendergast. Okay. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Trustee Prendergast.
Just for making sure we cover all our bases, I nominate trustee Lang as the alternate for the legislative task force.
Okay. Did we not do it as a block?
No. She only moved Marsha.
Okay. We have motion for trustee Lang to serve as the alternate on the legislative task force for, for the county.
I second it.
Second from trustee J. Any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Now move on to, we have two, the district has two representatives, board representatives to the two foundations. They're not voting members, but they're delegates and they participate in discussions. Current representative to the Saddleback College Foundation is trustee Witt, and the current representative to the Irvine Valley College Foundation is Barbara, is trustee J.
I move that the, that trustee Witt and trustee J continue on in those same positions for, for this coming year, upcoming
We have a motion to continue have trustee Witt serve as Saddleback College Foundation and trustee J Irvine Valley College Foundation, trustee Milchuker, a second from, I think, trustee Prendergast. Any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. We have five yes votes, one abstention, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Now on to, congratulations. We're now on to establishment of our meeting dates and times for the, I think it's supposed to say 2017. It says 2016.
Oh, this is 2016.
Okay. 2016 board meeting calendar.
2017, from January through
Right. My chichi says 16, but I assume that we're talking about 2017. Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, trustee Lang.
Normally, the board meeting, I think, is the third Monday of the month, but I noticed for August, it's the fourth, and I'm wondering why that date was selected, only because I may have a potential conflict on that particular Monday. Is there a conflict with some other?
It's normally the third or the fourth. It's, it's, normally it's the fourth, normally it's the fourth, but this time it's the third.
Starting back to school?
Yeah, it has something to do with the academic calendar. Oh, August, in August, I'm sorry. August.
I can change it for him.
Wait, you're saying it's ordinarily the, the fourth?
It's the third.
It's the, most of the time
Well, I guess it is the fourth, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. That's why
The July one is moved to the third so that I can be in attendance because I'm running, doing the Junior Olympics on the fourth.
Right, right.
What day is it?
The 28th. I think it is the 4th week. Yeah, it is.
You're absolutely right. Okay. So I guess I'm asking if, if it would be possible to change that to the 21st rather than the 28th. But if there's a conflict, though.
It's too far advanced for me.
It's the first day of classes.
Yeah, I will share
Anyone object to changing the August meeting to?
We're being told it's the first day of classes.
It's the first day of classes.
Okay.
Does it matter? I mean, that we have a board meeting on that day? College presidents?
Too much to put together an agenda with the startup of school and
That's a good question.
I mean, that's a mess, that's a question for staff.
Agenda-wise, it's fine. It's probably, it's probably
Agenda-wise, it would be fine because we already have July being a week earlier as well, so it's a month between.
That's, that's, that's probably
My wife, I can hear up here. You guys can't hear me?
Oh.
All right. We're fine with the 21st if that's what
That might be professional development week, but, but that, no, it's not. Okay. Okay, it's fine with me.
All right. Want to make a motion?
Thank you. I'll make a motion that that be changed from the 28th to the 21st.
Okay, motion from trustee Lang to change the August 2017 board date from August 28th to August 21st. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second from trustee J. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Witt?
Well, no, you got to vote on this first.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Trustee Witt.
Two questions. Trustee Prendergast, did you say we were changing July 17th?
No, July 17th is a change from when it normally would be in July so that I can be here.
Oh, okay.
If it were on the normal date, I would be working on the Junior Olympics.
I would like to request then September 18th to be changed.
Instead of what?
Sorry, no, September 18th. Yes, that's Monday. That's what it's scheduled for.
What would you like to change?
I cannot, whatever is convenient for you, but I will not be here. The 11th, that's the second week, but
Would it have to be the 25th?
The 25th?
25th is fine.
Okay. Do you want to make, make a motion to change it to the September 25th?
Yes, I so request that the board meeting in September will be on the 25th.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to change the September board meeting from September 18th to September 25th. We have motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All right, that was me. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Any further changes to the calendar for the board meetings?
Yeah, does it affect me at all?
All right, so let's move on to Exhibit E, which is establishment of agenda planning calendar. Okay, so now we need to vote overall on the board meeting calendar. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Lang.
I second it.
Second from trustee J. Any additional discussion? Go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Okay. Got a calendar. Now we're moving on to the establishment of an agenda planning calendar for 2017. We have a motion to approve it. Motion from trustee Lang.
I second it.
Second from trustee J. Any other questions or discussion? Let's go ahead and vote on Exhibit E.
Have you ever made a change to the date of August 21st?
Mike, can you?
Have you ever made a change to the calendar, Monday, August 21st and September 26th?
Same like our board meeting.
Except the change of the special, or the agenda planning calendar for August 28th, to change that to the 21st.
The other dates we changed also.
And September.
Okay, we have a
And September 18th to the 25th.
On the biennial ethics training.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept those changes?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Sec.
Second from trustee Witt. Let's go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Now do we have to vote on them? We don't have to vote again on approving the overall. Okay. Okay, Exhibit F, agenda format, recommendations to move resolutions from 2.0 procedural matters to the 5.0 consent calendar. This is on the agenda format. We have a motion to approve this change. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just, just for clarification, we're voting on one change, but there's, there's another piece of the agenda format that we had voted on in the past, and I haven't seen it on the agenda in quite a while. It was a placeholder for staff response to public comments, and so I'd like to make sure that that's part of this, that we reestablish that, because it hasn't been on there for quite a while. And it can just be a placeholder. There may not actually be any responses, but we should make at least the acknowledgement that we're willing to make those comments. Okay? And with that, I'll make a motion to include this change.
Okay. Second, motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Lang. Any further discussion? Okay, go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Exhibit F is passed. We now will adjourn our organizational meeting and call to order the special meeting of the Facilities Corporation of the South Orange County Community College District. Exhibit G, the Facilities Corporation meeting, the election of directors and officers. Do I need to read off the officers? We have board of directors, president, myself, vice president Jim Wright, secretary David Lang, chief financial officer Deborah Fitzsimmons, secretary Deborah Fitzsimmons, Fitzsimmons, and assistant treasurer CM Brombott.
I, I make a motion to have the same officers this coming year, this upcoming year.
Motion from trustee Milchuker.
Second.
Second from trustee Lang. Any further discussion? Or was that, Marsha, you making the motion? You're
No, I just, yeah, that was me making the motion.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the Facilities Corporation. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. We now adjourn the Facilities Corporation meeting and reconvene the regular board meeting. Not a year of change. Okay, so we're going to move on now to public comments. And I see that we do have at least one request, is this it? Okay, one request for public comment. And I'll remind commenters that we request that you speak within two minutes. And our first up, our only request is Kathy Schmiedler.
Good evening, members of the board and everyone else. I'm Kathy Schmiedler, and today, this eve, right now anyway, I'm speaking as a private citizen faculty member, not as academic senate president. I had originally put in my slip to speak about the, the parameters of the retirement offering, the golden, so-called the golden handshake, but I understand from comments immediately prior to the meeting that all of my concerns have been addressed, and therefore I'm up here to thank you very much for addressing all of my concerns before I even had to stand up to whine. I'd also like to point out that Bob Cosgrove offered me his two minutes, and I won't even use them.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Kathy. All right, we are on to board reports. Let's start off on my right with trustee Prendergast.
All right, let's see. So I will, I'll be nice and defer some of this to others since I think we all attended a lot of the same things. OC Pathways was, was really nice. I, I have to tell the story because it's just too funny. So they had all sorts of food and drinks and stuff, and they had coffee cups and for hot water and tea and coffee and so forth. And I'm trying to get the lid on the cup, and it just won't fit, and it just won't fit. And this lady next to me is trying to do the same thing. We're just looking at each other like, what, you know, we're looking around, is there another size lid? Did we get the wrong cup? It's just not working. And I finally said, wow, this isn't supposed to be rocket science. And I gave up and I threw it away. And she laughed really hard, and I thought it was odd that she thought it was that funny. And then later they had the panel from Virgin Galactic up there, and she was on the panel as a rocket scientist. So glad I wasn't the only one. I'm hoping somebody will mention the URL for the road trip so that our community partners out there will hopefully go on the website and sign it. I did not keep my name badge, so I don't have the URL anymore. Hopefully one of you did. If not, we'll figure it out. Board training was excellent. I thought we all did excellent work. Thank you all for being part of that. Feast of Lights, it was awesome seeing Todd conduct. That was, that was really, the tails were a nice touch. Nurse's pinning was awesome as usual. Holiday celebration, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make IVCs because I had the CIF Advisory Council that day, and it went long because some guy was long-winded in the meeting. I don't know, made it go long. And then, last of all, happy holidays, safe returns in January. Thank you.
Trustee J.
I attended that special board meeting entitled Developing Effective Board Skills presented by Donna Martin. It was excellent. She was very well-qualified. I remember meeting her at the CCLC convention last year. And then I attended Feast of Lights twice, the first presentation and the second presentation, and I enjoyed seeing Marsha Milchuker sing. Each night, I took a group of friends with me. And then Monday, I attended the IVC Foundation's Special Board Meeting in Irvine. Also, on the fifth, I attended the class of the fall 2016 nursing pinning ceremony, and it was wonderful. Fifty-nine nurses graduated, and these nurses were so happy for the support of their families and the wonderful nursing staff and administrators. And Thursday, I attended the President's Circle Holiday Luncheon at Saddleback College. The luncheon was catered by Sapphires of Laguna. We heard inspiring stories from grateful student scholarship recipients and found out how your, our support is making a difference in their lives of the Saddleback College students. Quite a sum of money was raised. Todd, how, how much was raised that day?
$53,000.
$53,000 was raised at that wonderful, and that was the first time we, they did it. Todd, that was the first, the first one, President's Circle Holiday Luncheon. And then Fri, Friday, December the 9th, I attend And then, Friday, December the ninth, I attended the IVC, EOP Care Cal Works 2016 Adopt a Family for the Holiday Holidays, their program. It was at the IVC cafeteria with a pizza lunch, and the program was extremely well-attended. There was almost not enough room for everybody. And I also have... I have also at IVC adopted two families for the holiday year.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Jay. Well, I attended some of the same things as well, the pathways meeting. If it was probably an engineer, it wouldn't have happened, but to a rocket scientist. I did get invited to be a panelist at the Orange County Business Council Workforce Development Session, attended by Glenn Rockmore, talk about the election, what it means for education. Thankfully, we didn't talk about the national election, focused on state and local stuff. And with passage of propositions 51 and 55, Californians support education, public education. So, they voted pretty overwhelmingly for the bond and the... We don't mind taxing ourself, I suppose, if it goes to education, or most of it, and we did that, with both of those measures passing pretty comfortably. Measure M didn't do so well locally from the Capistrano United School District, and I think, you know, they're going to have to retool a little bit and figure out how they want to move forward. I did attend the board training session. Deborah, great job in organizing it. Very well-done, and I think we did get a lot out of it. The open house at Saddleback College, I attended. I didn't get a gift, but Todd, you know, you look good as Santa again. I stopped by the IVC Holiday Lunch that benefited the foundation as well. I couldn't stay long, but I was there at the beginning, and I think you guys did a great job, and the foundation as well. And then, lastly, Bobby said something about the Saddleback College Foundation. What she didn't say is that she has stepped up in a big way. So, I really want to commend trustee Jay for putting money where her mouth is and contributing substantially to the Saddleback College Foundation. And she didn't have to do that.
IVC Foundation, too.
And IVC Foundation. She's a big part of why a large amount of money was raised on Tuesday at the lunch. And, well, a part of it. And we don't have to do that as trustees, not required to do it, but she's done it, and I really thank you for doing that. You're helping a lot of students out. Thank you very much. Trustee Lang.
Well, I just want to express my appreciation to all my colleagues who went to all these events while I was gallivanting elsewhere. We spent Thanksgiving holiday visiting my mother in Florida, made a swing up to New York, a side tour to Cleveland, not so fun there, but... And then, coming back and being out of commission for a period of time. So, I just want to wish everybody very happy holidays and best wishes for the new year.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Trustee Milch...
I just want to say, it's been another very busy time for all of our staff and for me in December, filled with meaningful, productive, and consequential events. I attended seventeen events, so I might not be able to get through all of them in two minutes. But at every event I attended, I learned... I was reminded of how hard-working, caring, and productive our staff is. Like so many other students that I meet in the community, our colleges are here to fulfill the dreams of students. And this is students from eighteen or sixteen, all the way up to very mature students of eighty-eight. And I know, I haven't been in a choir since I was in fifth grade, and I had an opportunity to sing in the choir at Saddleback College in this wonderful Feast of Lights concert I love, and it's just incredible. And it was a lot of work. Scott Farthing was an incredibly excellent coach and director, and we had an incredible number of rehearsals, and it was just a beautiful concert, and I thank my fellow board members for coming. They really said that he imbued in us the... That it was our responsibility to make sure the tickets were sold out. So, I sent out about three thousand emails, and it worked, because almost all five concerts were sold out. They sold not close to two thousand tickets. So, that was, I mean, kind of incredible. About eighteen hundred, but almost all the concerts were sold out. Larry Jones, the Saddleback College professor, another professor, a professor of sculpture, invited me to see a plaque he and another artist did for the Twenty-Fourth Infantry in the Korean War. And this was a beautiful plaque, and many of the infantrymen were there to talk about it. And this plaque will be sent on to perhaps some other sites, and we'll always recall these infantrymen that served their country. And the Orange County Pathways Showcase at the Marconi Museum was really interesting about the steam and, you know, STEM and STEAM projects that we have at our high schools and our community colleges. And I was incredibly interested in learning that we have a medical illustration discipline here at Saddleback College. I almost went into medical illustration when I majored in biology and minored in art at Ohio State University, and instead, I went on to become a research biologist. But some of the incredible artwork by the medical illustration students was just really beautiful, and I have to go visit that department. And also, Ken Lee, the professor of horticulture, invited me to go to an event at Brightview Design Group in Irvine, which is a landscaping group, and they're helping our students create a garden, which will be for our veterans, and it will be a therapeutic garden for our Saddleback College veterans, and it's going to be beautiful. The Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force reviewed a number of bills, which I don't have time to talk about, but I just want to wish everyone a happy and a healthy holidays, and warmest wishes for 2017.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
I'll be real quick. I attended a lot of what everybody else did, and you heard what happened. But I have to say that the pinning ceremony, the nursing pinning ceremony, obviously, is very close to my heart, and this was the very first time that I did not know one student on stage. So, that... But it still was beautiful, really was. And I did attend the Feast of Lights, and it was great. And the topper was when you were up there conducting President Burnett. It was... I mean, it was sincere, and it was fun. You know, it added some light to it. The board meeting that we had for CCLC Representative Donna was excellent. What I really enjoyed this time was the Orange County Pathways, and trustee Prendergast, I do have my card. And if you would... If you're interested, you have to... You had to have been there to really appreciate this, the pathways, and what has happened to students who have, you know, journeyed on that pathway. If you're interested, it's called ocpathways.com. And I plan... I plan on going on the road, and I do. I'm going to do it. I'm going to try it for a week, or maybe a few days, and take the bus, and wherever they take me, I'm going to share my story. So, I've been blessed to be here, more than blessed. And for whatever reason, it's the Avery entrance, but to this day, I hope he remembers, I say a prayer when I come on this campus in Thanksgiving. And I hope we all do, because we are around wonderful staff and faculty and administrators. And students are wonderful. Students are wonderful everywhere, don't get me wrong. But what we do to them, just is a catalyst that just brings out the best in them. And have a happy holiday, and have a great new year. We'll see each other in 2017.
Thank you, trustee Witt. Student trustee Ford.
I also got to go to that really cool special board meeting as an audience member, and, you know, watch the training. It was really good. I really enjoyed it. Taught me a lot about being a trustee, so it was very cool. I didn't get to go to any of those amazing and wonderful holiday events over this last week. Unfortunately, I was sick, and I ended up getting hospitalized with like a hundred-and-three-plus fever. So, yeah, oh my God, I still feel terrible. I have this overwhelming desire to sleep right now. For the last few days, just every moment I have, I'm like, and, taking an app. So, but I'm on the road recovery, so it'll be good. One of the things I did get to go to before I did get sick was an open forum at Irvine Valley College for students after the election. Fortunately, President Rockmore, we miss you. I know you're at accreditation thing, and those are all so important, so we couldn't have you there. I wanted to commend Vice President Fontenella for the lovely words you shared and your personal story, really connected with the students. I do want to say that even though the district and the school is really trying to make sure that students feel comfortable, it seems to not be resonating, at least within the student leadership, that there's still a strong air of fear about what may be coming with our new president-elect. And though we haven't seen anything of yet, it still doesn't alleviate the perceived fear. So, I commend the efforts that you guys have made, and I would just say, you know, just keep hitting it, you know, just keep going at it, and keep trying to let students know that we're here for you, and trying to do as best we can. And I wanted to represent that sentiment to everyone here tonight of what the students are feeling. But I, like I said, I'm really happy that we got to have it. I think we should have more open forums. It's a good place for students to kind of air their feelings to the administration. I think it's an excellent thing that we did. So, yeah, happy holidays, everyone, and hopefully, no one gets sick, because that is terrible. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor's report. Oh, sorry. Yes, I even said a point of privilege for trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, so I just want to reiterate, the Road Trip Nation that I mentioned before, and that Terry talked about a little bit, or trustee Witt, if you go to roadtripnation.com, there's two opportunities for you. You can do what trustee Witt did and sign up to go on the road to share your story with perspective that people that are students are trying to look for a path in life. Or you can go online to share your story and fill out a little questionnaire that those same students could just go online and hear different ways that people got to where they are, whether it's in a technical field, or business world, or anything. So, they're really encouraging people to do that, so you don't have to go in the green van and RV and travel around the country, but you can just go online. So, roadtripnation.com.
Excellent. Thank you. Now, chancellor's report.
Thank you. Tonight, the Board will accept the final accreditation reports from both of our colleges. And these self-studies are a culmination of an immense amount of work, a lot of hours, long hours, lots of late nights. And I just wanted to say I'm thankful to many and many people who stepped up district-wide to work collaboratively on this effort. And a lot of you in the audience, so can I ask all of you who've been working on the accreditation, please stand, so we can do a round of applause. It's pretty much the entire audience. So, excellent job, everybody. They're on further in our agenda. We're going to have just a couple of minutes where you can provide some updates, but we just want to show your appreciation for all your efforts. Thank you very much. We also have a short presentation of the district-wide and colleges' technology plans, and that's being presented by Vice Chancellor Bermuda and Directors Hagan and Marcial. I know they have collaborated on the plans, are excited to provide the presentation together, so you'll hear from them shortly as well. Each year, district services honors an outstanding administrator or manager, and the chancellor's office asks for input district-wide and looks for leaders who make an impact on our entire organization. This year, I'd like to say congratulations to Rosie Agalier, our 2016 Manager of the Year. Rosie was our payroll... Is our payroll and benefits manager, and she supervises a team that takes excellent care of our employees and ensures the district stays compliant, and employees get paid on time and correctly. And particularly this year, when we had our faculty and other bargaining unit, as well as mystery managers raises, she was able to get those done with her team in record amount of time. So, the people were able to enjoy those, and the retroactive pays very, very quickly. Amazing amount of work. Her positive attitude is inspiring, and people really enjoy working with her. So, she's not here tonight, but I just wanted to recognize her here tonight. She just received this award this past week. I want also... I also want to recognize Board Member Tim Jamal. For President Tim Jamal's years of service as Board President, we have a plaque for him. We wanted to let him know that we appreciated his leadership and dedication to the Board, the district, and the colleges, and particularly, all of our students. Thank you so much, Tim. You did a great job, and we want to present you with this plaque.
Thank you, Deborah.
So, the plaque says, "In appreciation of Timothy Jamal for your service as President of the Board of Trustees, Associate C.D., 2016." And Natalie wants to take your picture.
I told Deborah, thank you. It was totally unnecessary that she did not need to do this, but I guess it's always done, so thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks again.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We also want to thank all of our executive officers, Tim Jamal, Jim Wright, and Dave Lang for their work this past year, and all of the board members. You have a real commitment to the district, and everyone can see that. You attend many events, as we just witnessed tonight, at both of the colleges and the district, and your questions and dedication to this district is very well-seen. So, thank you very much. We also want to recognize trustee David Lang. We have a twenty-year district services pin for you. Congratulations. It's been twenty years.
Now, that deserves a bigger applause.
So, finally, I want us to have a sincere thanks to all faculty, administrators, managers, and classified staff of all of your hard work and dedication to our students. I want to say that you have really worked and supported each other, as well as supported me during the transition, and I really, really appreciated that. I wish everybody a peaceful, relaxing holiday break, and I just want to appreciate all of you and the work that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I know I've said this before, that, and I just point a privilege, I guess, and Deborah, thank you for the work you're doing, stepping in like you've done. You've done a tremendous job, and I think we agree ninety-eight percent of the time, so that's pretty good. Not a hundred percent, but almost a hundred percent. And, I mean, she really is, and she stepped in and, I think, done the role perfectly for what it's designed to do. And she's done everything that we've asked her to do, and she's done it fairly, and with... I haven't heard a single complaint about you, so I guess you're doing a pretty good job. So, college presidents' reports. Who's my... I always ask, who's going first?
I guess I'll go first. It's time, thank you. First off, congratulations as well from Saddleback College to President Jamal and Vice President Wright and Clerk Lang. Also, would like to announce, as Deborah announced, the district services manager of the year. Saddleback announced our Managers and Administrators of the Year at the same time. And pleased to say that we recognized for this year Anthony Marcial and Jim Rogers for their amazing work on the Science Building, and also Sophie Miller. And enough said, just Sophie Miller, because she's the most incredible person I've ever worked with. Anyway, with that, as you know, tonight, we will be submitting our five-hundred-page accreditation report, and as you know, this is about five... This is a comprehensive analysis of our college, a self-evaluation. It took almost two years to do. Over sixty faculty, staff, and management, and students worked on this that time period. We had twenty-five members of our steering committee, and a few of them are here tonight. And I would like to especially thank and recognize our tri-chairs, Dr. Juan Avalos, Dr. Bob Cosgrove, and Craig Connor. Like to also recognize our standard chairs, Diane Pastelese, Ken Brady, Sukie Fisher, Jenny Langrell, Roxanne Metz, Tony Tang, and our content writer and style writers, Claire Cesario and Amanda Ruid, and Donna Pribble, who did our graphics design, and Sophie Miller, of course, who supported all of us, and will do even more coming going forward. And with that, we're all preparing for our visiting team, which begins on February 27th. So, that is our accreditation visiting team week. Also, as you know, it's... We're already talking about the spring semester, which starts with Professional Development Week on Tuesday, January 10th. Hopefully, we'll see you all at all the events that we do during that. And of course, classes starting on January 17th. And with that, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Todd. Dr. Rockmore.
All right. Thank you very much, and congratulations to everyone that was seated tonight, which includes everyone here five times, I think, with all the different committees in the election here tonight. Accreditation certainly is the topic. It gives me the opportunity, even though you looked at our report last time, but to thank the team at IVC that did spend those long hours. Deborah reported that very accurately. And so, the faculty, staff, and administration poured their hearts out, and I believe you have read a very quality report. We now are moving toward an educational phase, where we will help the institution understand what is about to happen with the visiting team, and what they're up to, the things that they're interested in, and the things that they need to be prepared to answer when that question is asked. So, with that, I'll be speaking four times. So with that, I'll be speaking for Todd here, and I apologize, Todd, but we have both been chairs of several accrediting teams and really do understand the process in great detail. So should there be any mystery or any questions, either one of us, I think, would be available to help through that. So everything else here, the holiday gathering, thank you to everybody who attended that. It was a Festivus theme. If that doesn't ring a bell, it's from Seinfeld. I think that particular episode is on YouTube, so take a look at it. And happy holidays to everybody. Be safe.
Thank you. Now have Associated Student Governments, government. Guess we don't have IVC, but Saddleback College.
Hello, everyone. Before I go into my report, I wanted to quickly introduce our new Director of Student Life, Chris Hargraves, is here with us tonight. So he is the new Director of Student Life, and that is the advisor to the Associated Student Government as well. Chris, like, raise your hand or something. So we're super excited to have him after a couple of months of no advisor. This month, I was really grateful to be able to travel to Washington, D.C. with the Campaign for College Opportunity to advocate on the Hill for FAFSA reform. So it all was really wonderful and productive, so hopefully we see some of those changes being made in the next legislative cycle. With ASG, we are wrapping things up for the year after an incredibly productive semester, planning some great things for next semester as well, and getting started with a bang with our retreat. I also wanted to note on our accreditation report, you can see me with stitches in my foot, and so that will be forever memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. So how was your FAFSA reform recommendations received on the Hill?
You know, very, very well received. We met mostly with Democratic senators, to be quite honest, but even the few Republicans that we met with had some pretty positive feedback. Obviously, the climate is kind of unknown with what'll happen, given the next few months, but pretty well received. Thankfully, everyone kind of agrees that students are a good cause to give money towards. So hopefully, we see some of the changes that were made under the Obama administration codified, like the prior prior data, being able to apply in October. Because I definitely know within Saddleback and IVC, those two changes have been just wonderfully helpful for students and within the state as well. So we definitely hope to see those continue even into the next administration.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now on to any board requests for reports. Do we have any? We do not? Maybe we do. Trustee Witt?
I hope I get this. We had a discussion on housing for our students, and I think I would like to have a report. There was a PowerPoint presentation that was offered. President Burnett, you know about that, and you were, I think you were there down in South San Diego County? Where was it? I don't know. But I heard about it from another faculty member, and I would like to have the board be briefed on that.
Okay. Do you want to advise her of the process?
Sure. So the board office will send you the actual form that you sort of write out, the description, and we'll definitely bring it back for January for consideration for the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good idea. Oh.
Can I ask a clarification on trustee Witt? You mentioned the housing, but it was a report on all non-academic barriers, so it included also alcohol and drug abuse, mental health issues, food insecurity. You want the whole thing? The same presentation that Jeanne Harris called one, myself did at Riverside?
Within a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, that one was an hour long, so that might be a little too long.
Put that in the request, and we can get -- yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We're now on to 4.0. The --
Well, I think when it comes back.
Yeah. We are now on to discussion items, and there are none. So we will move forward to the consent calendar. Do we have any? I do have one poll from my end, 5.6. I have polled. Any other polls from other trustees?
I have a question on 5.7.
Okay. 5.7. Any other polls? All right. Motion from trustee Lang to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second from trustee Jay. Any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Okay, 5.6 I polled, and it has to do with the Saddleback College, well, the board, this boardroom, the audiovisual system of this current room. So I think I'm going to turn it over to Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Yes. So I asked Vice Chancellor Bob Bermuda to be able to sort of give you an update and an overview of what we're going to be doing in the boardroom over winter break, and then we're going to be asking you to come back in January prior to the board meeting for some training on the new system. So with that, Vice Chancellor Bermuda?
Much of the equipment in this room is aging or past end of life, and in addition, the industry has seen a switch over from analog technologies to digital. So what we've done is to, rather than inviting different companies to provide differing visions for the room, go and interview key constituencies, such as the board president, the chancellor, the folks that do support in the room, get their needs, build a list of what the room needs to do, come up with a list of equipment that everyone agrees will accomplish that in, and then we issued an RFP. We had a number of people respond to the RFP, had a job walk, and we chose our little better, and that work will be taking place over the break. We think that when you come back, you're going to see a brand-new generation of equipment. The cameras that were like that are going to be like that, and greater capabilities as well.
Thank you. And I just want to say, not everyone knows me. I'm the last person that want to spend this kind of money unnecessarily, and this is not a, an expense that I think is extraordinary, and I want to -- no Taj Mahal being built. I thank Dr. Bermuda and administration for doing the walkthrough with me, and I think it's going to improve things for us and for you. Motion from trustee Lang to move approval. Do I have a second? And I have a --
Second.
Second from trustee Jay, and a question from trustee Prendergast.
Just a clarification. So are we, did I catch that, that we're going to be stuck with President Jamal's vision of what this is going to be? Is that what I heard?
Not solely his. We identified constituencies that had major responsibilities in the room. It includes Grace and Joyce, includes the technicians in the control room, IT technicians, the chancellor, and the president of the board.
You can still watch the meeting from outside.
You just barely missed getting that interview.
That's a relief.
That was the president of the board.
I thought it was the holiday season. Spread joy. All right. So let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have five yes votes, one abstention, one trustee absent, and one student advisory yes vote. Trustee Jay, you want to speak to 5.7?
Yes, 5.7, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers. I noticed that this Rob Henry, who has, I guess it's Humanities 204X, Modern World Cultures, every, he has a guest speaker for every, every week that he's to teach. I just wonder, I just wanted a clarification on this, what it is and why it's so many guest speakers.
I do not know. Kathy, do you by chance, is Kathy here? Oh, there you are. Do you by chance know this class?
No.
We can find out. Yeah, the dean's not here either, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
I mean, I know Rob Henry, he was a fantastic professor, so.
Okay. Modern World Culture. He's not teaching. He has, it's just a bunch of guest speakers. So I just wondered what that was. I just needed some clarification on that.
So we'll get some clarification to trustee Jay on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. David, your mic.
There's one speaker on November, oh, that's already occurred, November 16th. So presumably, we've, we ought to approve that, seems to me, even if we're not going to approve the balance of the items.
I mean, I would still move approval of the item.
Yeah.
And you can always get clarification of --
Trustee Jay, would that be acceptable to you to move the item approval and get clarification?
I'll move approval of the item.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion from trustee Lang, and a second from trustee Prendergast to approve the item. Seeing no further discussion. Have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Excellent. Now we are going to, going to change the order just a little bit and move up in the agenda. Advance forward items 7.1 and 7.2, the accreditation, well, first we're taking 7.1, the accreditation reports.
So we have the reports on the agenda, and we don't have a formal presentation, but both colleges are prepared just to give a minute or two, just an update since the last time the board has seen them. And we have, I think, Vice President Juan Avalos and Bob Cosgrove, I'm seeing getting up, and Craig Connor, and Dr. McDonald. So with Bob?
Thank you, board members and guests. Toward the end, we've had all sorts of issues that pop up, which are technical in nature. So we had 3,500 links that we had to put into the thumb drives, and those are done manually. So it takes a lot of time. And Craig had worked on it, and we had a glitch, and then we had to work on it again. And so the people really who've taken that lead are Craig Connor and Rob and Jennifer in the accreditation and research office, and they have just put unbelievable hours in. And of course, before that, the chairs of the various committees and the faculty, or the focused quality essays by our staff did a lot of work on that.
I think additionally, you'll note that there's a time lag in the various versions of the report, and so I thank you for your patience as you saw delayed versions of it. You should have the final copy, which will look a little different from the one that was submitted as part of the board, in terms of the look and the feel. Currently on our SharePoint, we have the final report with a dynamic table of contents, so you don't have to flip through the whole thing. If there's a particular section that you're interested in, you would go in, you would click, it'd take you straight to that section. And then as you read it and you see evidence cited, you want to see what the evidence looked like, you click it, it's hyperlinked to all of the evidence. So we are very proud of our product. It's something that we believe represents the college as a whole, and we will take any questions if you have any.
Do we have any questions for Saddleback College? Well, thank you for, I can't, I can't imagine. Oh, here we go. Trustee Jay.
I have a question. That's right here on the page, one of the, the introduction, it says, "A driving range in putting greens that we have." I thought the driving range was gone. Is it still?
No, it's gone.
It's gone? Should it be in the?
What page is that?
One. Page one. Second from the bottom. Line, "A driving range in putting greens." Do we, we still don't, that's gone, isn't it?
It's gone. Wow. Update that. Page one. The first inconsistency.
Introduction.
It's the very last sentence on the page.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah.
I thought it was gone.
It's still there, it's just not operational.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
That's a really good catch. Well, any further comments? I think we all will have to read through this in more detail. But I know you guys put a lot of huge effort into this, and thank you for doing that. It's no small task to put something like this together, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll call up IVC.
Good afternoon. Again, I'd like to thank the folks at Irvine Valley College and the folks from the district who have helped us, and we have a report that I believe IVC and the district will be proud of. With regards to changes since the last board meeting, all we did were, we made just very minor technical edits. So the content pretty much remained the same. Our flash drive has been built out, and we have been ready to mail to the commission and to the visiting team. I spoke to Tom Lane at the commission today, and he promises that we will know the team members on Wednesday. So if we receive notice early Wednesday, we'll mail everything out on Wednesday. If not, then we will have everything ready to be mailed on Thursday. So everything is built, everything has been tested, and we're ready to go. Our focus at the moment is preparing the college for the site visit. So we'll roll out a campaign during Professional Development Week. We're planning to do a one-page accreditation, fast facts. We're putting together a pamphlet also, just to talk about, you know, myth versus facts. What my sense is, there are a good number of people at the college who need to learn a little bit more about the process. So including our own governance processes. So our pamphlet will outline, for example, our resource allocation process, the governance process, how we do student learning outcomes. So all the things that folks would be expected to know, we will outline in that pamphlet. And we'll cover things like, you know, recommendations for compliance, which are serious, versus recommendations for improvements, just to make sure that the college and the district as a whole will be informed about where we are and what we're planning to do. And if you have any questions, I'll take them now.
Thank you for that. Trustee Prendergast.
So when you guys find out who the team is, at what point will we find that out? I'm just curious, because there's people on it, I might be interested to know who they are.
The presidents will let me know, and then I'll send it out in a board communication, so.
Any other questions or comments? Chris, thank you for the time you guys put into this.
Thank you.
All righty. So let's move on to general action items. Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. I already preempted myself. 7.2, we move forward, technology plans. Is it, Dr. Bermuda?
That's my new phone that isn't connected to the Wi-Fi anymore. I'm going to need that fixed by the end of the meeting.
You didn't want the new system in here, so.
Yeah. I didn't say I didn't want it, I just didn't want your vision.
Okay.
Just because the holiday music started after Halloween doesn't mean the holidays have started yet.
I'm not going on the road trip with you.
Well, thank you. At the board's request, this evening, we'll be providing a brief overview of some major technology planning documents in our district, specifically the overarching South Orange County Community College District Technology Plan, the district-wide plan, because the district is all of us. We'll also be telling you about the colleges' technology plans as well. Some facts about creating the plan. The plan is, uses the same set of major goals as the other major planning documents within our district. So if you're looking at the district-wide strategic plan, or the educational facilities master plan, you'll see that they all key off the same overarching set of goals throughout the district. Our goals, obviously, are geared towards technology. This process was overseen by one of two participatory governance groups called the District-Wide Technology Committee. The other group is the District-Wide Online Education Committee, or DOEC. We made this plan to mostly highlight how basic aid funds. We have different mechanisms for funding technology, but basic aid has been the largest mechanism, so that's what this plan focuses upon. This is one of two documents that you'll be seeing eventually. The committee voted to split the task and to produce one plan about how technology is largely funded, and that's the document you're looking at this evening. The follow-up plan will be a technology plan that includes both a list of the services that we offer, called a service catalog, as well as the standards for providing those services, called service level agreements. If you look at the goals, ours are very, very close to the same goals that you'll find in the educational facilities master plan, and the strategic plan with one difference. We split our first goal into two goals. So everyone else has four goals, we have five. And the reason for that is we thought -- And the reason for that is we thought they were somewhat different. That goal had, it spoke to innovation and creativity, so we have one goal related to that. It also spoke about collegiality and the need to reduce barriers within our district, and so we separated that out into a separate goal. The rest of the plan matches what you'll see, the same, we have one about the academic environment, we have one about supporting a CWE, and we have one about finding efficiencies that can help us be fiscally responsible. The way the process works is that DTC meets, this is a participatory governance committee, it has wide and broad representation. They, after much deliberation, prioritize a list of products, projects that are moved forward to the Basic Aid Allocation Resource Committee, or BARC. And then, it goes from BARC to the chancellor, and from the chancellor to the board. That's an overview of the district-wide plan. I'm going to turn to Anthony Maciel to tell you about the Saddleback Plan.
Good evening, board members, trustees. I'm Anthony Maciel, the Director of Technology Services and Broadcast Systems here at Saddleback College, and I'm going to share our technology, about what we're, Saddleback Technology Plan with you today. This plan is a five-year plan. It goes from 2015 to 2020. And the author of the plan was a technology committee. I'm the chair of the committee. And the technology, it's got broad representation from faculty, students, staff, and management. Now, Saddleback is a very complex institution with many diverse technological needs, from our classroom wireless technology that we would put in place, to 3D printers, to our healthcare center and electronic medical records, to our police department and the need for their technology needs. So, the needs of the college is many. In order to capture all of this input from all of these different departments, we use four major data collection methods. We use surveys, we use a forum, we use also shared governance process through committees, and also a blog. One of the things that we did, we had one of the most successful student surveys, we had 10,000 students reply to our survey when we were conducting this. It was one of the most successful ones that we ever done at Saddleback. And we also had faculty and staff surveys. And then, we had two forums. We had a morning forum and an evening forum, so faculty members and members could come in and provide input into the plan. As well as management team and consultation council, we got, we got their input, and as well as through a blog. So, once we capture all of that information and we process it and analyze that, we began, or the technology committee began the process of aligning all of the goals and objectives with the Saddleback College strategic goals and also the technology plan for the district. Now, once we gather all of that, the technology committee was very ambitious in their, in their goals because of the needs of the college. So, we came out with eight goals and 34 objectives. And I will share with you some of the goals that, that came out of our plan. And the first one there is to enhance all classroom technology and develop an environment supportive of 21st century technology and up-to-date technology-based instructional tools. As well, we address some of the professional development opportunities that we need to have. If you integrate all this technology, we need to have that as part of that. And also researching and looking at various technologies that would aid in student success. And as well as designing an infrastructure that will be able to handle all of those technologies. And so, the process is that we would be updating, technology changes rapidly. So, we're going to be updating our plan every year in the spring. So, this spring 2017, we're going to be updating our plan to make sure that we're meeting our goals and objectives, and if any new technologies came into place, that we would integrate that into the process as well. Thank you.
Welcome, board members. Thanks for letting me come here to speak about our, our plan here. IVC is a little bit different. We've, we started our plan years ago, 2009 was when it began to be developed at the college, and then it was implemented in 2010. This plan included help with students, actually, let me change slide, students, faculty, and staff. It also included people from the district. They also contributed in 2009, 2010 to helping build this technology plan for IVC. Our plan is based on five different domains, or was based on five different domains. It was five technology domains, a governance, applications, web applications, network, and operations. And each one of these had their own set of objectives to accomplish to, to help the college meet their needs. Let's see here. For web applications, they would focus in on a portal, they focus in on SharePoint and different other technologies. For network, it was focused with enhancing the infrastructure to support virtualization, other types of things. So, those were some of the objectives out of these domains. And then, in 2016, we started the process all over again. So, this is, we're starting this year on a brand-new plan. But it started it last year with the help of Dr. Rupa Mather. She's my co-faculty co-chair, who shares the TAFT Technology Advisory Task Force with me. It was inclusive. We did have a lot of students' involvement, faculty and staff, like Dr. Bermuda and Dr. Maciel. We also had open forums several times a day, trying to get as many people to give us input. We also had electronic forums, surveys, blogs, anything we could do to get input. We wanted to know what the plan needed to do. So, we had people come together, even in our open forums, that's a picture of what you see there, people coming down, writing down what they wanted to have in our plan. And then, we took those plans and we shared it with all our different constituency groups, online education, academic planning, budget development, and things, and other different constituency groups. And the outcome of that was a 2016-21, 2021 plan. And what, what we ended up doing was we pared down our domains from five to four, governance, operations, network, infrastructure, and security, and applications. And each one of these have their own changes that were made to, to those. So, for governance, we focused in on alt-media, 508 compliance, making sure that we were providing material for, whether you were online or in the classroom, for anyone that had any sort of disability. For network infrastructure, we added security to it. We wanted to make sure that it wasn't just a matter of providing an infrastructure, but spam, making sure we do education as far as not opening up spam email, things like that. Applications, what we're trying to do to create efficiencies as far as developing systems that are paperless. We have a lot of paper processes at the college. We have years and years and decades worth of paper processes, and they need to be developed electronically. That's what the students are looking for and the faculty and staff in those areas. And then, operations. Operations, really, we wanted to focus in on training staff, staff development, and making sure that people knew how to use the latest technology. And that's the end of what I have for you guys.
Are there any questions?
Yes, trustee Lang.
Yeah, just real quickly, I'm looking at the IVC plan, and we've create, we've created, according to the title of, of your presentation, a technology master plan for 2016 to 2021. I look over on page four, though, and it talks about IVC's 2014 to 2020 strategic goals and objectives, and I'm wondering if that just needs to be updated.
Page four?
Yes, of the IVC plan.
And you said it mentions 2014?
To 2020, rather than 2016 to 2021.
Oh, on the actual plan itself, because my slide shows 2016-21.
But he's talking about the plan.
Oh, he's talking about, okay, yeah, yeah. We need to change the dates. It should be 2016-2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I just wondered. I've always been proud of our technology at, at, at our district. We've been like on the forefront of so many different areas. How do you determine, and you could just answer quickly, which is a district responsibility and which are the college responsibilities, and how do you work together to make sure that you're not duplicating your efforts?
I'll start that. In general, we have somewhat different responsibilities. I have, I'm responsible for district information technology, which centers around networking and applications. The college technology services division is focused primarily on providing faculty and laboratory computing.
Thank you. I had a question. So, for one for Saddleback, one for IVC, same question. What was the best idea that you had? What was the best idea submitted to you from the outreach you did?
I thought it was focusing on security. One of the things that we started doing, where we were focusing on the infrastructure, we were thinking infrastructure, switches, and how to get faster, better, and more collaborative, and break down all the walls and barriers. And then, someone said, "Well, where is the security education part, and what are we doing to protect the system?" So, that, I thought it was a good, good one. We were focused in on something else.
I think our, some people in Washington might, might need your advice as well.
The one, the one from Saddleback, it came from one of the students that said that they wanted everything to be able to be viewed on their, on their mobile device. So, everything that's in the classroom, everything that happens in there, they want to make sure that it's digital, so they can have access to it, and they don't want any paper laying around. So, they want to be able to do all of that stuff.
Yeah, it's true.
Great.
And I'll mention two ideas, one large, one small. The larger one is, we, we're embarking on a project now called Smart Schedule, where we reviewed the online course schedule. Everyone has to have one. And we find that they, all of them have ample room for improvement. And so, that's a very large project. We're looking on, looking forward to collaborating with others either regionally or statewide on that. A small idea is on the agenda tonight, and that, one idea we had was to improve the collection of positive attendance hours. Most courses have prescribed hours, but some do not, and the hours must be listed on a day-to-day basis. And the project that's in the board agenda tonight is an improvement over the collection of that data.
Great. Well, I see no further questions. I want to thank all three of you for your presentation. Well done. Okay, let's move on to 6.0. We're now at general action items. Well, let's skip over 6.1 for a second until trustee Lang returns, and let's go to 6.2, District-Wide Network Security Firewall Refresh.
I'll speak to that one. We use a multi-layered security strategy that includes several different types of appliances. We have an appliance that uses artificial intelligence to look for anomalies in the logs of our hundreds of computer servers. We have appliances that, that look for malware. We're about to change out that malware vendor. You'll see an item coming to you next month for that. This one is over our firewalls. These are the devices that try to keep bad actors from accessing our systems. There's been a lot of movement in the firewall space. They've improved the capabilities of this, so we look forward to moving to the next generation of Palo Alto's industry-leading products.
All right. Is there a motion to move the item?
Move approval.
Motion from trustee Milchker, a second from trustee Prendergast. Seeing no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote on the item. Oh, Dave's going to have to put something down. This, the District-Wide Network Security Firewall Refresh. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. We're going to go back. Trustee Lang, I skipped 6.1 because I thought you wanted to be here for that acceptance of the district retiree op, all the audit reports that took place.
So, we have before us the audit firm, as well as Executive Director Kim McCord and Vice Chancellor CM Brumbutt. So, if I can ask the auditors to come forward and present the reports.
Good evening. My name is Deana Whittington. I'm a supervisor with Christie White Associates. This is my second year as the in-charge for this audit. We included not just the district, but all of the foundations. And not only is it my second year in charge, also presenting here at the board meeting, but I'm happy to state that it's our second year in a row with absolutely no findings. All reports were clean. We did spend time in the audit committee, going in detail over all of the reports, but I'd like to take a few minutes to highlight a couple of the pages in the district report, if that's okay.
Sure.
If you have your reports in front of you, on page two, this is our opinion letter. And in the second paragraph under opinions, it stated that "The report is presented fairly in all material respects the financial position of the district." And that's the highest opinion that we can provide to you. If you'd like to turn over to page 14, this is the net position of the district-wide. And you can see on the bottom line, the net position of $499 million. The majority of that, those funds are in, for capital assets, of $358 million.
Which page, 14?
Yeah, some of us are looking.
Okay, I was on the other one.
What is it?
I thought I was looking.
Yeah, some of us are reading it online, so. Page 18.
Yeah, the bottom pagination doesn't match the top pagination.
I'm sorry.
Can you say that again, though, and I'm, I'm on the page, I think.
Okay.
What page?
Page 18 and 87, exhibit A at the top.
Eight, is it on that here?
I have an iPad. iPad.
Page 18.
Okay. Right, I got, I'm on, I'm there.
Okay, so that's the statement of net positions for the primary government. On the bottom line, it says total net position of $499 million. And of that breakdown, the majority of the funds are investment in capital assets of $358 million.
I see, okay.
The very next page, this is showing the changes that occurred on the previous page as far as revenues and expenses. Towards the bottom, you can see that the change in net position increased by $35 million. This is a trend we're seeing statewide. There's been a big influx of funds, and it's taking a while for everyone to catch up and to be able to spend those funds wisely. They have to identify programs and get everything rolled out. So, that is consistent with what we're seeing with our other clients. Okay, the, the main page, and this is the summary page for the whole report. On my number, it's page 75 on the bottom.
Bottom, okay.
It's page 83 in the board packet.
It's hard to see these numbers.
I don't know, too far down.
It said page 83 in the board packet. Okay, great, thank you.
You have it up? I can just look on here.
Okay, so this is a summary of the auditor's results, and you'll see on the first line, it's an unmodified opinion, which is the highest we can provide you. About halfway down the page, it'll be the federal awards that we reviewed, and it was the financial assistance cluster. We, we had no findings at all in this program, and you should be commended for this because you're, this, the, the administration of this program is decentralized, which means it's administered at each site, and we were able to find consistent procedures at both sites. And that's not, not always what we find, so that's, you should be proud of that. The next line down, whether this is a low-risk audittee, you do, you do meet the requirements for a low-risk audittee, and that's a big accomplishment also for a community college. The subsequent pages, if there had been findings, would be listed here. And since there is not, they're blank, and the final page shows the findings that would have been carried over from the prior year, and there were none.
Okay. Sounds like a good, good report.
Very good report.
Stay up there for a second. You've got some questions. Trustee Prendergast.
Not so much questions, but thank you for your, your diligence on this. It's, it's nice to know that the processes are working and that we're getting good audit results. But I, I think a lot of this, I, first of all, I want to thank trustee Lang for his leadership, his chair of the committee. Makes things go a lot smoother when we have someone with the number sense to catch things, and it makes your job easier as well.
Yes.
And I did want to make a comment. I know it's probably not going to be popular, and I don't really care. I think this was a good example of workday working, that we were, we were fearful or, or apprehensive about what could happen if things weren't going well. But from what we got in the audit meetings was that it worked the way it was supposed to and made things easier for everyone. And so, it's not all bad out there in the workday world, and I want to make sure that we get a positive comment on that.
Thank you. Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations to you, but even more, congratulations to our staff, to Deborah, and to CM, and to Todd, and to Glenn. I was a member of the audit committee for many years, and I, we never had no findings, never. And I could relay what the findings were. You know, there was a little something here, a little something there. But I think it really gives me a feeling of security to know that it seems like everything's going really smoothly and seems like there's no one stealing our money out there. So I feel really good about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Milchker. Trustee Witt.
Yes, when I was reading this on page 39, the hard copy 39, I'm certain that that's, and it's very minute, but when you're talking about these large numbers, the net pension liability, it usually always increases by a small amount, doesn't it? The liability that the college incurs, because we always talk about pension liability when we make decisions. On page 39.
My page 39?
The hard copy 39, yeah.
Yes.
So you've been doing it for two years, and you said there was an increase, a slight. But for years past, it's always increased, I would imagine.
So this footnote's actually pertaining to Gatsby 68. And this is only the second year that this note's been in the report.
Oh, okay.
So these are, these numbers are derived from personsters themselves through actuarial reports that are then shared out. And it's the, it's the state's liability that they're sharing with not just school districts, but also any of the water agencies, law enforcement, anybody that's participating in those plans. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Oh, yes, Trustee Milchker stole a little bit of my thunder. But I did want to also basically congratulate all of the members of the, you know, financial folks in this district, starting at the top with Deborah and CM, who's done a brilliant job, I think, in stepping in and taking over, and Kim, and all of the folks in the department. I think all of us as trustees should feel very proud of the, of the work that you folks are doing to keep this district in such great financial, you know, shape. Not only from the fact that, you know, we had no findings from an audit standpoint, but just, you know, one of the things that I'm proud of and talk about when I speak with folks out there is the fact that I believe, truthfully, that we are, if not the healthiest, certainly one of the healthiest community college districts in the state of California. And I think that's something really to be proud of. No, thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Okay, so thank you. I just want to add one other thing. So not only do I want to recognize Executive Director Kim Accord and Yvonne Otusa, who helped lead and manage the audit, and thank you to the auditors as well, but personally call out Davit Kachatian and Carol Hilton, who's not here tonight, but Davit is. And also recognize something that our auditor pointed out, but really is significant. And that is, when you're doing compliance audits on some areas that are complex, it's financial aid. And we do have decentralized financial aid offices. And we're talking about a lot of things that need to be looked at there. That's really something that we need to really point out to and highlight, that they did such a great job on this audit and throughout, through their operations and their procedures. And I know fiscal team works together very hard, talking to each other and working on a regular basis with processes, procedures, and everything else that we do. But those financial aid directors have a hard job, so I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again.
Thanks.
Okay, now we need a motion to move the item. Motion from Trustee Lang.
Second.
Second from Trustee Milchker. I don't think we have further discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, we're now on to 6.3, Saddleback College ATAS renovation project.
This item is presented to the board with a lot of discussion. This has been, can you hear me?
That's better, okay.
This item is presented to the board because we've been working on this renovation for ATAS building for a long time, as it is presented to you in the items. Since our conversation, I have met with Dean Tony Tang and also Kathy Worley, Vice President of Academic Affairs. And I also have a chance to meet with all the lead faculty as well, because we really wanted to know exactly where we are and what we would like to do. And at this juncture, what we like to recommend it to the board that we need to take a pause before we move forward to the renovation for the ATAS building. We also would like to come back after the holidays in trying to see what are the best solution for overall for the CTE program at the Saddleback College. And trying to find the right course of action for us in the future, rather than just go full speed ahead, and then we get caught in a halfway, and they say we didn't do a good job. So this is what we are asking. The two concern, I just want the board to know that all the lead faculty speak very clearly in terms of what they would like to see. And their main concern is, right now, they are in a temporary buildings for the entire CTE program. And they have, they know that they're going to be there for a while. So they have some specific needs in order for them to strengthen their CTE programs. So I have asked Dean Tang to kind of meet with the lead faculty, see what is their list, what are their immediate need, because we wanted to make sure that our faculty is very comfortable and our students are very comfortable in those classes. So we are trying to say, step one is let's take care of where they are right now, you know? But at the same time, the second concern that they have is, from the historical perspective, it takes a long time for us to bring, if the solution is for the new building, their concern is that it takes a good seven, eight years, and would they be stuck in a temporary building for seven, eight years or not? And, and I heard enough comments, and I just wanted to make sure that there is a possible way for the district to shorten that time. Because right now, we are not looking for funding from the state or anything of that nature. We already know the programming part of that particular building. So what we need to do is take a pause, reconvene, meet with the lead faculty after we return from the holidays and say how we are going to address our issue for the CTE program at Saddleback College. So we are listening to our lead faculty. Dean Tony Tang is very energetic to work in terms of what our needs are. And so does President Todd Burnett. So we are, all stars are aligned to make sure what is the need for the CTE on this campus. We just wanted to take a pause. And if I can answer any question.
Sure. Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I think that's a very sensible approach. I know that some of the people, some of the faculty members, the professors in automotive technology.
Point of order. We can't discuss it until there's a motion.
Oh, okay, I move approval.
That's right. Okay, we have a motion to move the item. Motion from Trustee Lang. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second from Trustee Jay.
Sorry.
Okay, further discussion. Trustee Milchker.
Now I can talk. Okay, great. So, you know, I think speaking to the stakeholders in that, in that, in the disciplines of the disciplines that meet in the, in the ATAP building, ATAS building, prior to us reconstructing the building is really important. I know the automotive technology is certainly a big program that we have, and they need a lot of space. And, you know, talking to that program and to the other horticulture, to the ecology program. But some of the programs that really take up the most space would be like automotive technology. And important area where our students, when they graduate with, in that automotive technology department, make more money than our professors make. And I'm sorry to say that, but they, it's a really, there's no longer the grease monkeys. They have to really be very schooled in computers, because the cars are run by computers. So it's a really important area for us to teach at our colleges and for our, for people in our community to have these workers. So I think it's really good that you're talking to the stakeholders and those people in that disciplines to see what they need before we go ahead and build the buildings. That's my feeling.
Agree. Thank you. Do any, I assume there's no response?
I think we agree.
Okay.
I think we are listening to the stakeholder exactly, because we wanted to make sure they are the one in the front line to serve the students.
Right.
You want to make sure.
Trustee Witt.
CM, ATAS has been down on lower campus for a year, correct? All right. And I've, I've heard people tell me that lower campus is not the most ideal for visiting to education, for go to the bathrooms. So I did. So I went down and walked around, you know, not peak, but walked into the classrooms and into the bathrooms, et cetera. And I, I see where, at the day I went, I see what they're talking about. Now, if I had to, as faculty, if I had to be there for eight, nine years, that would concern me. Now, being that I was on lower campus, where the campus safety is for how many years? A long time, although it wasn't that bad at the time, because we were contained in that row of buildings. You make the best of it. My concern is, is that what happened, why is there a pause? We were going to reconstruct, or you had to put in, what was it, a wall? You had to put in some safety wall or something? What was that for, for the building?
Can I just, so we did talk about this a little bit in closed session related to a contract. There's a pause because the needs are greater than what is going to be served in the renovation of the building. We want to take a step back, make sure that all needs are met. The last thing you want to do is go into a newly renovated building and say they still is not, we still isn't handling all of our needs. So I think it's smart to not throw good money after bad right now. We need to take a step back, make sure, we look at alternatives, and come back with a strong recommendation that's based where, for all users that are going to be in that building, and make sure it serves the needs, not only just in 2016, but in 2016 for future. And one of the things we're making sure is that they don't stay down there for eight to nine years. That's what CM was trying to address, is we went, listened, they went, listened to the faculty, listened to the program people, and we want to make sure that those concerns are addressed.
Okay. Maybe we could do both.
And the two comments I just wanted to make, I couldn't agree more with you. If I have to be there for eight, nine years, I won't be happy either. So that's what we are trying to.
Thank you.
Acknowledge that, number one. And number two, we, the building, what we have today, currently, we need more space than that building.
Yes.
So I don't want to go back in there. That's a number one. Even though we addressed today, we even not talking about for next 15 years. We know that every program will have a growth pattern, demographics will be changing. So when we are looking at any building from this point onwards for any program, we need to make sure that our growth is being already considered for the future. Otherwise, we will be always to the kind of, I need more space, I need more classroom, I need more lab. So we really, really need to address that part. And third thing is, we really need to know exactly what will be the best location for the CTE, so it will be more attractive and more flexible space. Because it is very difficult for us in a CTE program to keep those spaces as is and bring the new program in. Unless you have the flexible spaces on a first ground floor, then you can move large equipment out of it, and you bring the other large equipment in there. So right now, we don't have that flexibility in that space, besides the building constraint. So those are the issue that we are trying to address once and for all. And that's why we're saying, let's pause, let's not put any more money and our effort in there. And at the end of the day, if that's how it comes out to be with the lead faculty conversation, we will listen and we'll go that route. It's not our opinion that matters, their opinion what it matters for us to bring the programs for the building.
Thank you so much. That's important.
Well said, CM.
Well said.
Trustee Prendergast.
So I just, again, very, very comforting information. I just want to make sure I understand a couple of things. One, if we vote yes on this item, nothing's being done, it's just, you're gonna examine this a little bit further. Is there any sense of how long of a delay that might be? Because again, some of the concern is how long they've already been in there. They weren't under the understanding they were going to be in there that long, and now it looks like longer. Even if we're trying to do an effort to renovate and keep it short, if we do a new building, all that, what are we looking at as far as how much of a delay this might be?
At this juncture right now, because our MEP contractor that we may have to replace, if we wanted to go with the renovation itself, that there will be an additional cost to bring them onboard, number one. And there will be additional delay before the DSA going to stamp this one. We're looking at anywhere from five to six month additional delay, even we decide to do the renovation. So that's kind of given, so I just want you to know that part. What we are trying to do is trying to shorten that timeframe in terms of pausing and say, if we can bring the new building on campus with the right location, could be phase one, could be phase two, we like to shorten the timeframe. If I have my druthers, that I would like to get it done in three and a half to four years, and that is doable. From programming to the working drawings, awarding the beards, construction timeframe, you will be able to bring your brand-new building from three and a half to four years, fast track.
Okay, and so which brings me to my second question. My assumption is, though, is the only way that's going to happen is if we have to approve more than 20 million.
For, for the space that you are taking right now, what you have the assignable square footage, and what you're looking at assignable square footage in today's environment, you have allocated $20 million. You have allocated enough money for that space. You have not allocated enough money for all the growth and all the additional spaces that we are using into the CTE building. And that's the reason I'm saying, when we pause, we will be able to know whether we are going to have the CTE as a complex, and there may be have a phase one building and phase two building. Because right now, the biggest user, which is our auto technology, they are in M1 and M2. We may be able to keep them slightly longer until the phase two building comes in, but rest of all the program that you might be able to bring in, in phase one, brand-new building. So you can bring your rapid tech, your architecture, everything into the one building, and they can start. And there will be a phase two, same complex, under the same name, where you say, this is a CTE compound, and they go over there.
So how much have we spent of the 20 million originally allocated already?
Can I, can I go ahead? We've spent a little bit over $1 million on what we've done so far. And the $20 million is left over. Again, we expect, probably not the January meeting, because we're going on winter break, but by the February meeting, we'll have a recommendation that has been thoroughly vetted at the college through the division, as well as through the executive leadership and whatever process Saddleback has, and have already vetted. We'll come up with options, and we'll be able to bring some course of action to you. So at least you'll know what we're dealing with and what the options will be. And I think then we'll move forward. And I just want to mention one other thing. With an alternate location, it could also be less expensive, because the location that we have now, we're dealing with a lot of engineering, a lot of things. So it really have, you have to look at both options and then cost them out.
Good. Todd, I assume Saddleback College is supportive of this process, this pause?
As you all know, the task building has been problematic since the day it was constructed. And I'm thrilled to have CM and interim Chancellor Fitzsimmons, who have been very supportive of our college, who has actually wanted to take action like this. I also would like to point out Brandy Delena, who's been very helpful on this, and everyone else. So as CM said, if we're going to spend money, we should spend it smartly. And so we should do it at a building that is, really meets not only the needs of our programs, but meets the fiscal needs of our district and ensures much more long-term viability. And what we're looking to do here will accomplish all of that, and I think you'll be very pleased in the end.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on 6.3. Let's go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote, one trustee absent. Okay, 6.4, Board Policy Revision, Board Education. I have a motion to approve the item.
Oh, second. Do you have a motion?
Well, we don't have a motion.
Oh, move approval?
Motion from Trustee Milchker. Second from Trustee Prendergast. Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I, I had a lot of my questions answered earlier from Deborah, and I really appreciate her answering the questions, so I don't have to take up all the board's time with my questions. But I just wanted to say, I, I'm going to vote for this, but it seems.
But I just wanted to say, I'm going to vote for this, but it seems somewhat prescriptive, you know, telling the board they should do this, and this, and this, this day, and this day. But I know that you have to attend two workshops per year on board education, you should attend. It doesn't say must, but it's suggesting it. So it, we've never had anything this prescriptive ever. And I know what you're trying to do. You're trying to get the board to attend more meetings and to go to more meetings outside of the district, and that's all worthy. So I'm going to go along with it because I feel it's a worthy goal, but I am still, it seems very prescriptive. That's the one thing I have to say. It gives me a little bit of pause.
So can you tell me, if I don't mind interjecting? I thought the previous version was prescriptive, but I think there are changes to this version that make it far less prescriptive. Where do you think is too prescriptive?
Well, it just says that they should attend two meetings per year, and they should try to attend two meetings out of the district every year. But it doesn't say should, it doesn't say must, it's a suggestion. So that's what I'm saying, it's a plan for board members, but they did take out the must and the requirements, so there's no requirement. So it's a lot better, and that's why I'm going to vote for it. But it's still, I'm not used to having, you know, it's said in the board policy, how many meetings I should attend per year. So it's, and most of us attend far fewer meetings than it's suggested here, and it's not a bad idea.
Actually, you exceed expectations.
I do?
You.
I do?
Of course.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't think so, but not outside of the district.
Okay.
In the district, I do, for sure.
Okay. Trustee Lang.
Not mandatory. Okay.
I have a couple of suggestions that I think might make it slightly less prescriptive, since I found, you know, trustee Milchiker's comments rang true with me as well. Under guidelines, I would suggest that we change in one, where it says all board members will, to say all board members are expected to. And then I'd like to make similar change in number nine, where it says board members who are appointed to board committees, instead of will, are expected to participate in training related to that committee subject matter, and regularly attend the scheduled meetings and provide reports back to the full board periodically.
First one, I think is good. The second one, I think is cosmetic, but I'm fine with the second one. I don't know.
And I can provide these changes to staff.
Trustee Milchiker.
And in number five, I just was surprised to see this because it's suggesting the meetings that we can attend out of state, or out of, I'm sorry, not out of state, out of the district, I should say. And one of them is the academic senate for the California Community Colleges. And I've never attended an academic senate meeting for the California Community College. I didn't realize it was appropriate for board members to attend those meetings. So if it is, I'll leave it in.
So we have suggested changes from trustee Lang to the language.
Well, and I can further speak to it, I just think when you put in the word will, it is sort of a require, it does sound like a requirement to me, and I don't think that if we are truly trying to make these expectations rather than requirements, that's the reason that I suggested the language change.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah, because people get busy. You have, a lot of people have full-time jobs, and it's not, it's not always easy to attend meetings out of the district.
So do trustee Lang's suggestions ameliorate your concerns?
Yeah, they do ameliorate my concerns, thank you.
Okay. All right.
But we need to find if the maker of the motion will accept the changes.
All right, did I make the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I will accept those changes.
Okay. Motion to move the item with the changes suggested?
I knew I made the motion.
And is there a second? We have a second.
Second.
Trustee Witt. You know, you had your hand up earlier.
The maker of the motion accepted the amendment as friendly, so we don't need to make, vote on the motion to amend, we just need to vote on the item as amended.
Can I ask one other question? Is it appropriate, in item number, I think it says you attend the meetings of the academic senate of the California Community Colleges. Is that appropriate for trustees to attend the meetings of the academic senate of the California Community Colleges?
So what that was intended to read was to professional development of trustee-related knowledge and skills with emphasis on CCLC. It doesn't mean attending senate meetings, but it means there's trainings that are offered that are sponsored by the, jointly sponsored by sometimes CCLC and the state academic senate, things like that.
So there would be like a meeting sponsored by the state?
Not meeting, usually training, professional development activities.
So there would be a training or conference sponsored by the California, the academic senate of the California Community Colleges, of course?
Usually co-sponsored.
And that would be appropriate for a board member to, a board or trustee member to attend those meetings?
Yes, and then on an annual basis or more regularly, the chancellor will circulate recommended workshops and conference opportunities for the trustee to just sort of see what's out there.
Okay.
Okay, student trustee Ford.
Yeah, on that last one, I actually get requested to go to those general assembly meetings for the academic senate for the state at the general assembly. Last one that just occurred, they actually emailed me to request my presence there.
Is that the academic senate of the California Community Colleges, or is it the student academic senate?
No, it was the academic senate one. I got actually requested to speak on different panels at the general assembly, but I couldn't go because of conflict.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Got asked to speak.
Yeah, I got asked to speak. So they do request that, at least the student trustees and the ones that are in the student trustee organizations and SSCCC that they come to those meetings.
That's interesting, okay, thank you. I may go to a meeting like that this year, so.
Trustee Prendergast.
I think what may alleviate that concern as well, maybe if we strike out all the listings of places to go, so it doesn't look like, A, those are the only places you can go, and B, that you have to go to those. You know, because you could go to the community college faculty association, state, you know, I've been asked to speak at those in an open forum. So I think what the intent, as chancellor Fitzsimmons said, the intent is that you're getting knowledge and skills primarily, or with an emphasis on community college issues. So I think we could just say, knowledge and skills with an emphasis on community college issues at the state and/or national level, and then just strike out all the different organizations. I mean, they'll give us the different organizations we can pick and choose from when they come available, we'll get invited to things. I mean, the student trustee organization invited us when we were up in Sacramento in January, saying, hey, you know, you guys should come to sit, and that's not listed here. So it almost is worse to list things than to just make it open.
You can just have a period right after skills, TJ.
Okay, I'll accept that change as well, okay.
But I think the intent is that it be, have an emphasis on community college issues. So I think you can still have that at the very end.
Right.
So knowledge and skills with an emphasis on community college issues, dot.
And also, when you come back from a meeting, report to the board what you've learned in your two-minute board report. So you won't be able to talk about anything you've attended that month. That's okay. Maybe that's, it'll give everyone a break, that's good.
Okay, so we have another amendment.
I think trustee accepted the.
So she accepts, she's maker of the motion.
And just to clarify, trustee Milchiker, item eight already talks about sharing out.
Yeah, I know, I know, it says that there, so I think that's a good idea, an excellent idea also.
Okay. Kathy Schmiedler.
With regard to attending the academic senate of the state of California, California Community Colleges, we don't usually see very many board members, but occasionally, board members are asked to speak, and occasionally, they attend either all or part of the sessions for their own education. It's public meetings, anybody can come if they want to. But it's always interesting to have board members there and participating in the conversations and seeing, hearing something where most of the speakers are faculty members or instructional or student services administrators, deans and such. But we get college presidents, we get vice presidents, we get administrators of various sorts, and we don't get very many, but we do occasionally get board members. So you certainly should not feel as though you're not allowed to go.
Sounds interesting. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, so let's vote on the item as amended. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Okay. Yes, sir. Trustee Prendergast.
I make a motion to extend the meeting to 9:30.
A motion to extend the meeting to 9:30. A second from trustee Milchiker. Let's see, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, and one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. Well, if we don't make any more amendments and edits, we should finish by 9:30. So we're on to item 6.5, board policy revision, academic ranking.
Accept 6.5 for review and study.
Motion to accept for review and study. Is there a second?
I second.
Second.
Second from trustee Jay, and question from trustee Milchiker.
Well, I just, I'm sure this is the case. I just want to make sure this has gone through the academic senate and the professors agree with these titles of academic ranking for them, so.
It's not changed from the last time, so this is, yeah. They have done the college-level review.
And I also agree with the idea of giving professors that retire the academic ranking with emeritus after that, because I think we should honor our professors that retire. I just went to a funeral last weekend of Jim Lindblad, a physics professor, a longtime physics professor of Saddleback College, and, you know, they give their whole lives to teaching, and we should honor them when they decide to retire, so that's my feeling.
Okay. All right. Motion and a second. Go ahead and vote on 6.5. Unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. 6.6, conflict of interest, updated biennial code review and amendment. Motion from trustee Lang.
Second.
Second from trustee Prendergast. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote, one trustee absent. 6.7, authorization, authorization of payment to trustee absent from board meeting.
Move approval?
Motion trustee Milchiker, second from trustee Lang. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have one abstention, five trustee yes votes, one absent, and one student advisory yes vote. 6.8, academic personnel actions.
Move approval?
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Lang. Any discussion on the item?
We did that.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on the item. Sorry, hold that back. Trustee Lang.
Just one comment, and that was, I wanted to thank whosoever idea it was to put in the additions that show the fiscal year-to-date figures for the additional compensation numbers. I think that gives the board some valuable information.
It's my idea.
Well.
No, no, no.
Well, whoever wants to take credit for this idea, congratulations, it was a good one.
Whose idea was it?
The board gave credit.
Come on!
Lost and missed.
All right.
Both agreed.
Okay.
And after you guys finish patting each other on the back.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on 6.8. We have five trustee yes votes, one trustee abstention, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. 6.9, classified personnel actions.
Move approval?
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Lang. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote on 6.9. It is a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. 6.10, amendment to tenure-track faculty hiring, Saddleback College.
Move approval?
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Witt. Seeing no questions or discussion, go ahead and vote on the item. Trustee Witt. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory abstention. 6.11, IVC body-worn camera research and demonstration project.
Move approval on this one?
Motion from trustee Milchiker, second from trustee Lang. Any discussion or questions? Oh, go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, 7.1, 7.0, reports. 7.1, Saddleback College and IVC accreditation reports, we did that, we did 7.2. 7.3, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers. 7.4, list of board requested reports. 7.5, Saddleback College, IVC, and ATEP vision and mission statements. This came up last time, right?
Sure. This came at a former board meeting, and because it was clean copies, it was hard for the board to distinguish the changes that were being recommended, so we brought this back. Also, we made sure that it went to district-wide planning council as well for information and review. So you can see the changes now on 7.5.
Okay, thank you. 7.6, basic aid report. 7.7, facilities plan status report. 7.8, monthly financial status report. And 7.9, retiree OPEB trust fund. We're now into reports from administration and governance groups, and kicking it off is the, it's not going to kick off with the Saddleback College Academic Senate. So I guess we're going to start off with the faculty association.
Well, as it turns out, I don't have anything to report, other than to wish all of you a happy and healthy holiday season.
Thank you. IVC Academic Senate.
Well, actually, my first report is from Kim. Special delivery. So as Kim from Saddleback Academic Senate, I am reading her message. Good evening, Board of Trustees, members, and interim chancellor Fitzsimmons. The Saddleback College Academic Senate is wrapping up the fall semester and has accomplished quite a bit during that time. We have been working on developing new processes for items such as our standing committees, LMS, that's learning management systems, decision-making, and so forth. Faculty have been busy at work with all things accreditation and would like to extend our sincerest gratitude to the Accreditation Steering Committee, chairs, writers, and editors. They have done a phenomenal job. We are gearing up for a busy and productive spring semester. Until then, we wish everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you.
And now, from myself, as Academic Senate president from IVC, I will echo what Kim just said so articulately. And I would like to apologize for absenting myself for a bit during the meeting, but I have elder care issues. Also, I would like to praise the board and the interim chancellor for all of their collaborative efforts to improve the opportunities for the members of the board to educate themselves, in particular concerning accreditation and the hiring process for bringing in a new chancellor. But I'm sure that these efforts have extended to other contexts and contents as well, and your extended discussion of your, of the board, new board policy, I think, is another exemplar of that. Let us all have a fruitful and restful holiday, and I will paraphrase a general-purpose description of most, but not quite all, Jewish holidays, since there was reference made to this holiday season. They tried to kill us, they failed, let's eat.
Yay!
Very good. Vice chancellor of Technology and Learning Services.
No report.
Excellent. Vice chancellor of Human Resources.
No report, but thank you, board members, for the gift you give of time to us on a regular basis. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice chancellor of Business Services, or acting vice chancellor.
Thank you for the opportunity, and everyone, have a happy holidays.
Thank you. We have IVC Classified Senate.
Hello, good evening. We pretty much wrapped up our 2016, oh my gosh, I was going to say 2017, 2016 year. Right before Thanksgiving, we had our last meeting of the year. And then, so we've been kind of quiet. On a side note, as the statewide classified senate, South vice president. On a side note, as the statewide Classified Senate South vice president, I did get to attend the CCLC conference in Riverside, and it was my first time to attend. I hope to attend again. It was very fascinating, extremely educational, and it was heartening to hear some of the concerns being expressed, especially for many of our students in the coming years, at their concerns and some of their fears being addressed at that conference. So it was nice to hear that and hear some strategies that are taking place and how we can all be a part of that. So that was great, and I really appreciated that. Besides that, happy holidays, and we'll see you in 2017.
Thank you. CSCE president.
Just wanted to wish everyone a very enjoyable and restful winter holiday break and a wonderful 2017. 2017 is going to be a very interesting year, to say the least.
Indeed. Saddleback College Classified Senate.
I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy holidays this season. Thank you very much.
And that's a great note I also want to end on. I also wish everyone a safe, happy, healthy holiday season. Thank you for what you do for our community and for our students, and we will see you all in 2017. Have a good night.